Our Human Resources meeting, today's date is March 6, 2025. The time is 10:00 AM. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matarri. I want to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I would ask that we handle items three, four, and five at the end because I understand there's a presentation. So I'd like everybody else to be able to go back to work.
Okay, Commissioner Eberlein? Okay, all right. So let's go ahead and we'll do that. Public comment. Nope. Okay, let's move on to business. The first item is a position conversion. Positions 300-037 and 314-001 to a new patrol sergeant. This is with the Sheriff's Office and Captain Andy Deek.
Good morning, Commissioners. Captain Andy Deek for the record. Yeah, the Sheriff's Office is seeking the mid-year combination of two existing positions to create a new position for supervision needs in our department in the Civil section. The auditor has provided a cost projection worksheet for that, which amounts to a net savings this year fiscally and future years as well.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I just want to point out that 31,000, almost 32,000, is a significant savings. So thank you for bringing this.
For FY '25?
Yep.
Yeah. So Commissioner Eberlein? Okay. Motion?
I move that we approve the position conversions. So positions 300-037 and 314-001 to a new patrol sergeant for the Sheriff's Civil Division.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item two is a position conversion. Position 173-006 from maintenance operator to senior maintenance operator, building and grounds. And we have Director Jeff Fuller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sorry I'm late. The construction meeting at the Justice Building ran late. So yes, we are seeking position conversion from the maintenance operator. So we previously discussed some overlap regarding this, but we have a senior maintenance operator that is moving into a part-time position. And in doing so, we would like him to stay at the same pay rate that he is currently at.
Any questions?
No. And I'll just point out that this is a savings both this year and next.
Yeah, I have one question. What are you doing with the position that the person is moving from?
That has been backfilled with a new hire as a senior maintenance operator.
Okay, so they will be senior as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Motion?
I move that we approve the position conversion. Position 173-006 from maintenance operator to senior maintenance operator.
Aye.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up is item six, transit organizational structure discussion with transit. And we have Chad Engel.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Chad Engel for the record. So I am here today to address an important matter regarding the organizational structure of the Transit Department with a specific focus on the upcoming audit and ensuring that our department meets both federal and state regulations as well as the triennial review requirements for the Federal Transit Administration. So as you may recall, in December 2023, the Board made the decision to transition the Resource Management Office department into the Transit Department. So subsequently, in February 2024, the Board directed that two job descriptions within the department be revised to reflect these changes. And these revised job descriptions were submitted to Human Resources for reclassification in compliance with county policy. It is important to note, the Federal Transit Administration has vetted these job descriptions to ensure alignment with both triennial review requirements and other applicable regulations. So the organizational chart for the Transit Department reflects the positions necessary to manage and operate our federally funded program in compliance with all relevant state, federal requirements. Although our team is small, it is essential to ensure that all necessary roles are covered effectively to manage the department, especially given the increased responsibility driven by the federal, state, and local regulations. The organizational structure must also ensure that there is adequate separation of duties as mandated by FTA. Furthermore, we must have individuals who are cross-trained to maintain operations in the absence of one another, guaranteeing the continuity and efficiency of our department. State and federal regulations mandate that we have the appropriate personnel in place, each with clearly defined job descriptions, duties, and responsibilities, to successfully execute the federally funded program. This includes ensuring that our personnel possess the necessary institutional, managerial, and financial capabilities to plan, manage, and oversee the program's operations. So given the complex nature of the Transit Department responsibilities and the importance of maintaining compliance with federal, state, and local regulations, I urge the Board to address any likely gaps in our organizational structure to avoid deficiencies in our upcoming audit. The continued success and compliance of our department are critical, not only for the proper execution of our federally funded program, but also for the continued trust of our stakeholders and the public.
Thank you. Any questions?
I don't know that I have questions. I just want to make sure that, you know, is the Board satisfied with this proposed transit organizational chart?
Commissioner Eberlein?
Not so much.
Now, I have a number of questions with it. I guess a couple of them are, prior to the reorganization of RMO, is your job as described prior to the reorganization in this org chart?
It is, yes.
Which one is that?
So it was renamed to Program Services Administrator.
Okay.
So for clarification, that new title would go with a new job description because there are duties that are being removed from that position. So your exact position?
The exact position, yeah. It would be changing to reflect the new duties, yes, correct.
So it does not exist right now in your proposed org chart? Is that correct?
No, I mean, it's going to be changing, so no, it doesn't exist.
So it does not exist, okay. And what about the person who went from W-2 to 1099? Was that W-2 position still in this org chart as it was described prior to the RMO getting reorged?
I'm not sure what the W-2 position.
There was a person who was on payroll that ended up going into a contract position?
Oh, the contract personnel.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that contract is through the end of this year, and so they're working on a very minimal part-time.
Okay. So I'll ask the question again. Was, is that position in this new org chart that was?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there already, so are there already people identified that are automatically going to be filling these positions if we agree to this org chart?
Well, the, I mean, there's personnel within the office that I think should fill. Are they automatically? No.
Okay. Okay. I do kind of feel like the Board, did you have something you wanted to say, Sylvia?
They covered it. They covered it about the program manager and then that program services administrator. It got clarified.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. I kind of feel like there are some issues that the Board probably should discuss related to this org chart and how we want to proceed moving forward that may require an executive session.
Okay.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion? Yes.
Sure. I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to IDO Code 74206-1V.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye.[632.41]
Let me know when you're ready.
Welcome to monthly center your page.
Ten forty-three, I'll take a motion to exit executive session.
Delby.
I move that we exit executive session with no decisions being made.
Aye.
And, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner O'Grady?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Teller?
Aye. Motion, did you want to add something to that?
I was just going to say that we are scheduling a job descriptions workshop next week when it fits into the thing and
Our schedules.
Yeah, when it fits into our schedules and then we'll be able to move forward on the reorganization and all that stuff.
Okay, well, I
If I enjoyed the seats, they were
Motion carries, on to item number seven. Compensation policy one twenty, proposed revisions, and this is with human resources and Director Sylvia Proud.
All right, with all the changes in our pay plans, it was definitely time for our compensation policy to be reviewed. The HR has been working on this for quite some time. These are proposed to the board for your consideration. So as we were revising the policy and made these suggestions, we monitored changes in the pay plans. So we've added matrices, we've reduced the number of steps and certifications within the sheriff's office pay plans, as well as how the sheriff's office has handled their step movement because they've had pay matrices for dating back to the early two thousands. So HR's goal, as we proposed this, was to be consistent with all pay plans. And we have five of them, which are the general pay plan, attorney pay plan, chief deputies, nine one one, and the sworn officer matrices. And we also needed to define when step anniversary date changes and when steps are given. So you have before you a clean copy of the policy and a redlined copy of the policy, and it looks very different from what we used to have. So I will just start with some key highlights, defining what steps within ranges. Pay administration involves the use of two dates for employees. Their step anniversary date, and of course, they have their date of hire. Their step anniversary date, each employee has a step anniversary date which may or may not match their date of hire. This date reflects entry into the current position. And then we define how those dates might change and how pay might change. And then there's longevity date. The board, a year ago or two years ago, approved longevity pay for the sworn officers. And so we worked with Marsha back then to determine what their longevity date is. And that is for the sworn peace officer, this is the date the employee first held a sworn position. And that's how that's been managed. The next area that I wanted to highlight was movement through the pay range and criteria to receive a step anniversary increase. Of course, step anniversary increases have to be approved at budget time by the board or whenever they see fit. And if they're budgeted, there's conditions employees have to meet to receive their step increase. And this is based on their step anniversary date. There has to be at least, based on the criteria the board established when they started giving step anniversary increases, it was determined that there must be at least twelve months between step anniversary increases unless approved in a public meeting. And then it talks about pasta living adjustments if budgeted or correct beginning of the fiscal year unless otherwise designated by the board. So the conditions to receive your step anniversary date, which we developed with the board and they approved, was no documented performance issues in twelve months preceding the employee's step anniversary date into position. And it includes performance improvement plans, last chance agreement, involuntary demotion, suspension without pay, and written warning or written reprimand. And we, they only get a step increase if they haven't, if they're not at max of their pay range. And then the sworn officers and the detention deputies have other criteria. So that was a big change for us in policy. And then the hiring salary, this had been established a while back. We just needed to update it to how the board had defined it. So what that determines is what step you can bring somebody in based on their experience. So if you meet just bare minimum experience qualifications, you should be hired at a step one. Up to one year of relevant experience, the board was allowing up to a
Let me know when you're ready. Ten forty-three, I'll take a motion to exit executive session.
Delby.
I move that we exit executive session with no decisions being made.
Aye.
And, oh, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Commissioner Everly?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Tari?
Aye, motion, did you want to add something to that?
I was just gonna say that we are scheduling a job descriptions workshop next week when it fits into the thing and-
Our schedules.
Yeah, when it fits into our schedules and then we'll be able to move forward on on the reorganization and all that stuff.
Okay, well, I-
If I enjoyed the seats, they were-
Motion carries, on to item number seven. Compensation policy one twenty, proposed revisions, and this is with human resources and Director Sylvia Proud.
All right, with all the changes in our pay plans, it was definitely time for our compensation policy to be reviewed. The HR has been working on this for quite some time, these are proposed to the board for your consideration. So as we were revising the policy and made these suggestions, we monitored changes in the pay plans. So we've added matrices, we've reduced the number of steps and certifications within the sheriff's office pay plans, as well as how the sheriff's office has handled their step movement because they've had pay matrices for dating back to the early two thousands. So HR's goal, as we proposed this, was to be consistent with all pay plans, and we have five of them, which are the general pay plan, attorney pay plan, chief deputies, nine-one-one, and the sworn officer matrices. And we also needed to define when step anniversary date changes and when steps are given. So you have before you a clean copy of the policy and a redlined copy of the policy, and it looks very different from what we used to have. So I will just start with some key highlights, defining what steps within ranges. Pay administration involves the use of two dates for employees. Their step anniversary date, and of course, they have their date of hire. Their step anniversary date, each employee has a step anniversary date which may or may not match their date of hire. This date reflects entry into the current position. And then we define how those dates might change and how pay might change. And then there's longevity date. The board, a year ago or two years ago, approved longevity pay for the sworn officers, and so we worked with Marsha back then to determine what their longevity date is. And that is for the sworn peace officer, this is the date the employee first held a sworn position. And that's how that's been managed. The next area that I wanted to highlight was movement through the pay range and criteria to receive a step anniversary increase. Of course, step anniversary increases have to be approved at budget time by the board or whenever they see fit. And if they're budgeted, there's conditions employees have to meet to receive their step increase, and this is based on their step anniversary date. There has to be at least, based on the criteria the board established when they started giving step anniversary increases, it was determined that there must be at least twelve months between step anniversary increases unless approved in a public meeting. And then it talks about pasta living adjustments if budgeted or correct beginning of the fiscal year unless otherwise designated by the board. So the conditions to receive your step anniversary date, which we developed with the board and they approved, was no documented performance issues in twelve months preceding the employee's step anniversary date into position. And it includes performance improvement plans, last chance agreement, involuntary demotion, suspension without pay, and written warning or written reprimand. And we, they only get a step increase if they haven't, if they're not at max of their pay range. And then the sworn officers and the detention deputies have other criteria. So that was a big change for us in policy. And then the hiring salary, this had been established a while back, we just needed to update it to how the board had defined it. So what that determines is what step you can bring somebody in based on their experience. So if you meet just bare minimum experience qualifications, you should be hired at a step one. Up to one year of relevant experience, the board was allowing up to a step two. Two to three years, up to a step three, four years of relevant experience, up to a step four, and five years or more, a step five. And anything beyond a step five, so if you wanted to hire somebody at a step six, you had to come before the board in a public meeting and present the situation, and the board would be approving anything above a step five. Within comp policy, we also defined what step laterals come in at, and we worked with the sheriff's office, and that is established in this policy if you approve it. Then we also had to define what happens to your step anniversary date upon a transfer, and then upon promotion. And so step anniversary dates do change, is what we were proposing for a transfer and also promotion. And also, within the promotion piece of the policy, we defined hiring salary up to a step five, and then also making sure that they're on a specific step and that you want your increases to be somewhere between five and fifteen percent, but anything above a step five, the managers would come before the board for approval. Then we have salary upon career progression. When researching this area within the county, we found documentation dating back to two thousand that career progression has been used for changes in employee positions and pay status. We found reference to KCSO policy steps dating back to two thousand and three. So the terminology isn't new to how the county has functioned in the past, but what we're doing is really defining what that means and how pay is impacted by career progression and what happens to your step anniversary date. Same for salary upon demotion, and also salary upon reclassification of positions. And then one of the key changes that we've been adding to all our policies, this one deals with shift differential pay and special duty pay. And so what we're saying, because we found that from some experience we've had with employees being gone a lengthy part of time, is we're recommending that shift differential pay and special duty pay will not be granted if the employee has not actively worked for six consecutive months. And we built that language into our vacation policy, sick policy, holiday policy. That's a quick overview for the board to, well, I don't know if it was quick, but just kind of a higher, bigger picture, trying to call out what changes we had proposed, and it's for the board's consideration and review.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions up here?
I do, I have a couple of questions. Under the shift differential pay, it talks about that differs distinctly from a normal shift. So what, what does that mean? Because I see like a normal shift is kind of set eight to five. So if somebody starts at seven or seven thirty, do they get shift differential pay? Is that, what is, what it's meant by distinctly?
Page you want, okay, I see it, second to last.
So just from what I've seen since I've been here, there are individuals who get shift differential pay that come in at seven or work till six. So I mean, it's board's discretion on how you would want it tied that much tighter. A lot of agencies do swing shift, like afternoons and graveyards, and you get shift differential, and it may vary by shift. But we've seen it given to employees that come in as early as seven.
If I could clarify that, unless, that in essence, if you have like a graveyard shift at night, you get a little extra because it's a less desirable shift, is that in essence what this is?
Yes, but it, there's a lot of, it's happening more, it's pretty much universal that if your shift is seven AM to six PM or whatever it might be, you're getting shift differential. So I guess the board needs to define what is distinctly different from our regular hours. But what you see in most agencies is your afternoon shifts and graveyard shifts would get it. From what we've seen, just doing some surveys on vacation and those sort of things. But I, we left it the way it was in policy originally.
Did you have more questions, Commissioner Duncan?
Just only one more, because it's not really defined here, but it talks about special duty pay and where shall recognize temporary special duties when an employee is placed on a team, and it lists all these teams. And so if somebody's on, you know, two, three, four teams, are they getting, you know, up to-
Is it aggregate?
Yes, is it aggregate, thank you.
I, yes, it is. And I believe what the sheriff's office has found, I did ask Marsha about that, is that the max they've seen so far is that there's three different types of shift differential pay, but maybe the auditor's office is more familiar with that. But that's what Marsha said, is she's seen that maybe people are on three different teams, so they get those amounts for each team that they're on.
Okay.
So are you, are you thinking maybe of just having a limit on that, or just clarification?
Not necessarily, just clarification, yeah, so just, because it didn't really spell it out in here, so, you know, could just say in aggregate, I don't know.
I would like to at least just comment on the shift differential pay, because you bring up a good point. And it seems like we probably should have a band, that if it's outside this band, if you will, then we would consider the shifter differential, because if someone, I mean, we have people who might like to show up at ten and stay till seven, and that works really well for their schedule, but does that qualify as a shift differential?
In policy, I believe it does say, let me look up that area. Let's see, I believe it has to be approved by the department head, and if it's out of convenience to the employee, you don't get it.
Yeah.
Shall be determined by the elected official. And it shall be determined by the elected official and the board which positions are eligible for shift differential pay.
Well, it's just a thought. You know, it'd probably be prudent to at least ask the elected officials who are affected by this, which I presume is largely the sheriff's office, if that would be something they'd even consider. Now, I do have some questions for you, though. Commissioner Everline, did you have any questions you want to ask? Okay, so have the elected officials had a chance to review this document and they given you all their feedback?
No, I wanted the board to see it first, legal has reviewed it just to make sure there weren't any legal concerns. And my next step was to the board, and then whatever action you want to take from there, whether you want it to go to the elected side.
Well, I think it's prudent, because, you know, even though the board has the authority to approve these things, getting their feedback, I think, is important before we start making decisions. The other is, you know, and thank you for updating with the steps. You know, assuming that this board wants to continue with that step process, one of the things that didn't get updated was the frequency of these salary surveys. And so I wanted to ask you, we're doing that this, this year, aren't we?
Yes, we are, we do them every three years right now.
Okay, and are the elected officials given the job descriptions before they go out for the salary survey to ensure that the job descriptions are up to date at that point in time?
We worked on job descriptions a while back, pre-COVID, and then anytime they have an open position, we ask them to look at them, but they do not get them in advance.
Okay, it seems like that the elected officials should get the job descriptions that you want to send out for a salary survey before we send them out, just to ensure that they're up to date?
And they have access to them every day-
I understand.
That they're working on with their positions.
There's access, and then there's, you're doing what you are expected to do, and them not knowing exactly when you're doing it, just as a matter of courtesy for them. And that way, they can approve of the descriptions and just make sure everything is updated. So I would argue that that, you know, presuming that the board would agree, that we at least engage the elected officials on these jobs before they go out and make sure that they are up to date. And then I would also propose that we reduce the frequency from three to five years because we are doing these steps, because people are getting a bump every year.
But steps aren't addressing market, steps are addressing progression through that standard of pay range?
Yeah, I guess the only thing about market that I have a problem with is the methodology for it. I believe there should be one, but, you know, we've had discussions in the past about, you know, what our pay was for certain departments and how in the end, we weren't getting qualified applicants. And so a study might say, your pay is good, but we're not getting qualified applicants. And consequently, you know, that is how I see the market driving pay a lot of times. If we can't get qualified applicants for these positions, then we need to rethink, you know, what we're offering.
And there is that flexibility, because what we would do, and it has been done for the sheriff's office, is they've come before the board and said, hey, we're having a recruiting crisis, can we revisit this? And then we went and gathered new market data, and it was then brought to the board, and the board approved adjustments. So you can do those interim, like right now, we are advertising for a registered nurse, and they're hard to come by, but we have that salary as it is right now. We do have it scheduled to be looked at in the wage study. And if we're not recruiting, I'd say we have to come to you and say, hey, we're not having any luck getting our nurses' positions filled. Would you consider us pulling market data earlier than a wage study or as needed?
Well, you know, I appreciate that, and the only reason I even bring it up is because I've watched previous board meetings prior to me coming on where these salary surveys would pick these different markets. And then they would do an average, and they would say, you know, you're making more than what the average says, right? And, and so it gets used in both directions. Where, you know, the argument is, well, according to this survey, your, your people are getting paid just fine, so what's the problem? And that's my only concern with it, because we're doing the steps. We've talked in the past about doing a COLA adjustment on the matrix. And so as long as we aren't having a hard time filling positions, I, I think it would be appropriate to adjust the frequency of the salary survey. But that's up to the board here to decide.
Yeah, that's board discretion.
Yeah. All right, so then, does anyone have any thoughts on this? I mean-
I, I think just my only concern is if we have to go several years without a COLA, then it could be a problem when the next wage study is done, because then the, the wage study will show that, you know, we're significantly below that and, you know.
I agree with you, and that's where it's up to the board to ensure that we're paying people properly, so one, they don't leave, and two, you know, we don't put ourselves in these positions. We also are confined by exactly how much the budget can grow each year. And so if we, if we create these expectations for people and we don't have the funds to meet that expectation, then that creates a whole new issue, too. But I would propose at least today that this document go out to the elected officials and get their feedback, and then, you know, incorporate that into your final version, and then we can revisit this.
How long do you want them to have to review it?
Probably a month, maybe the next-
Couple hours? Just kidding, yeah, a month is fine.
Okay, so, so the first HR meeting in April.
Okay, all right, we'll send it out. Now, is there any direction on whether you want me to change the labor market surveys to five or leave it at three?
I, I think three is fine, it just depends on, let's see, how can we say this? Should be conducted once every three to five years, depending on, you know, I mean, because COVID really ruined everything. And so that, that really changed our whole-
Why would you do it on, why would you do it on three to five?
Well, Bruce wants five, and I still think that it should be available at three if the labor market dictates it.
Well, we can do it anytime we want, I mean, this is just a policy, so if we end up being in that situation. But it seems like, you know, our issues that we've dealt with since the last salary survey was we're down to nine people in dispatch, what do we need to do? Well, the salary survey didn't help us at all, we had to increase the pay to equal Spokane's, and now that made a difference. And so, you know, to me, the salary survey carries less weight compared to the vacancies that we have.
Yes.
And so really, it's more of just a barometer and not a guiding document for, you know, what we should be doing as a board.
Which I would say that it's only happened in the last few years.
Yeah.
Regular increases every single year's only happened in the last few years.
And, you know, you've been through this, and I agree, because the, the whole COVID thing, you know, a lot of people retired as a result of that.
Yep.
You know, and it really, there's been a, an adjustment, a transition. Now, I do know that, given what we've seen in the headlines, a lot of people are looking for jobs, you know, whose employer is in Washington DC, so there might be an opportunity there as well with this stuff. But, so there's going to be a state of flux or a lot of change, at least, for probably the next couple of years. Okay, well, any other questions, thoughts?
Well, but she doesn't have direction, so three to five, or no change, or five alone?
We can revisit it, I prefer five, no less than. Commissioner Everline, what, what are you thinking?
I could say four and a half or three, or-
Split the baby.
Leave it at three to five.
Okay.
Because it is, it's a document, and it's flexible, and it's probably about the same worth as, as the dollar is today.
Okay.
And HR doesn't engage in it unless we get approval from the board.
Yeah.
Understood. Okay, that's item seven, on to item eight. Countywide open positions overview, human resources, again Director Sylvia Proud.
All right, I do this regularly with the board, and you can let me know if you want it to continue. Right, currently, as of March third, we had a total of seventy-four positions open. This is a decrease of fourteen point five percent from the same time period in two thousand and twenty-four. Thirty-three of those open positions are funded at fifty percent for fiscal year twenty-five. And today, Tess and I had a recruiting meeting with Marsha, and she gave us some good input on how they're doing with their positions. The sheriff's office is down from last year by twenty-five percent in open positions. And currently, for patrol, they have four upcoming hires starting this month through August. For the seventeen open detention deputy positions, she indicated she has twenty-six people in backgrounds. And for the ten echo positions, non-supervisory, there are eight people in backgrounds. And she's hoping that one has, for the echo, has completed everything, they just have a couple more steps to go. Unless something happens with that, they feel like that might be a successful hire, so. That in a nutshell is the open position summary, questions?
Questions from anybody?
Nope.
Looks like we're moving in the right direction on some of these positions, so thank you. The last item, number nine, Aaron recruiting software update, we'll be very quick with this. We have Sarah Masters here.
This was submitted as a request for HR to provide an update. Just going through the payables list, it appears that the initial year, we paid a little over seventeen thousand. We just got the next invoice, and it went up about a thousand dollars. Based on the amount of people who have used it, it was just requested that we get an update on its effectiveness.
And I requested this, so.
I can give you some info on that. With Aaron, the program began in August of two thousand and twenty-four, the whole employee referral program, and we worked with Bruce on trying to find ways to get our positions filled, increasing the- increasing the employee referral incentive from $300 to $1,000. So right now, based on the Aaron program, we have 63 referrals that had been made. And based on the number of people we hired, that shows a 43% referral rate. We hired 146 people in 2024, and there's 63 referrals. Now, the referral is just that status of, hey, you're talking to someone at the grocery store, you're at a career fair, and we have several openings, and we use the Aaron software program as a link for them to get access to it. Then the candidate who's applying doesn't have to put a name in the application. It'll link to that employee with their account, so then it just makes it smoother. Now, we are currently reviewing the effectiveness of Aaron. We're, we want to monitor it for a little bit longer, and by December 2025, looking at, we would have to give notice December 2025 if we do not want to renew it. And if we're not getting a lot of referrals out of this, not out of this, if employees aren't using it, then monitoring it from an efficiency and effectiveness manner would be that we'd come back and propose to the board canceling the Aaron subscription. But we feel like it's really too early to do that. We've been sending, we send emails, we've done newsletters monthly to our staff. We presented at department head meetings, elected official meeting, and new hire orientation. It's covered about our employee referral program. We were, we're working with Marsha to go to their roll calls and their briefing so that we can just make sure that that referral program is out there for the staff to understand and use so we can get our positions filled, and they get $1,000 if it all goes through successfully to hire.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No. And the main reason that we even looked at this is because we just weren't getting qualified applicants with other methodologies, even to the point of trying TV, I believe.
Yes.
And we couldn't get anyone. And so the idea is that the people who work here know what it's like, and they can talk to people, and there's an incentive for them to refer people to us. So, thank you. That concludes the business side. Public comment. Anyone like to speak? Jonathan, anyone on the line? Okay, 11:12, meeting is adjourned.
Which meeting are we going into, next one?